All right, it's about that time. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City of West Bend Common Council meeting for December 19th. Note that we do have a quorum with all aldermen present and accounted for. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
............................................................
All right, first up, we have approval of the minutes. The Common Council regular meeting minutes from December 5th.
Motion to approve.
Okay, I'll just give that to you both. So, Allen and Model, any comments or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, so I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And I'm going to grab items number 21 and 22 and bring them up here next so we can take care of them. I imagine that's why most of the audience is here. So, number 21 is open for public comments regarding the ordinance amending section 7.075 and repealing and recreating section 7.085 of the municipal code relating to downtown parking and parking permit lots regulations. My guest to start off with a brief presentation by our chief will let us know how we got here, and then we'll open it up for comments from the public. Chief, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Common Council. Apologize, touch under the weather tonight. This was an important meeting and certainly wanted to be here to represent the city, our work, and the members of the downtown. So, I apologize for my voice. How we got here is in 2002. Actually, we had a very interesting history lesson at the bid board meeting following our council meeting last two weeks ago from Mr. Herb Tennis, who told us that this issue started in 1959, we're surprised to learn, of customer parking problems in the downtown area. It was not surprised, but kind of actually reinforced that we were on the right path. Mr. Tennis told us the solution at that time, when Highway 45 was still Main Street, cutting through the town, was to have the employees all walk across the river to the city-owned public parking lot to open up spaces on North Main Street for customers in the downtown. And Mr. Tennis filled us in, it was actually very interesting, on the progression of different parking options, timed parking, parking meters, and the things that were there. Fast forward a little bit, in 2002, your elected body put together an ordinance that addresses more formally and identified commuter parking, and basically did exactly that again, returned it from a timed parking to identifying employees and residents in the downtown area and restricting their parking, their ability to park down there during the day. And it was a very complex ordinance and remained on the books, still is on the books now, but is no longer sustainable. There is a database that's supposed to be maintained by, at first, the Downtown Association, then the city. That's no longer maintained, and that database required employers to register all of their employees' vehicles with, first, the downtown and then the city. And that's no longer happening, hasn't for at least 10 years. And it's problematic as our city has grown. It's asking the very people that were looking to comply with the ordinance to comply for enforcement, so it's problematic. There's no longer shopper permits being issued, so much of the ordinance has become cumbersome and no longer enforceable. I believe very strongly that we should not have laws on the books that are not being enforced, that are unenforceable. And we talked about that at length at our last meeting. So, as we addressed those different options, we met with the bid board. Started last January, I believe, was the first of our discussions where we got serious about it. And I guess my understanding was the bid board was the mechanism to represent the business owners downtown. It was representative of all the business owners. They had a chance to speak there. They were given opportunities through their representative officials to speak. So, we presented several different options. We knew one option would be a laissez-faire approach. I've made it very clear from the beginning that from a public safety issue, I don't, from a public safety standard, I don't really have an issue with the parking downtown. We don't have an excess of crashes because of the parking. We don't have traffic flow issues. So, you put me at somewhat of a disadvantage. I'm very good at articulating why I think we need certain laws and ordinances when it's a public safety issue, but that really isn't the case here. This is a community responsiveness issue. This is something that the businesses, or a portion of the businesses, I think a majority of the businesses have approached the city and said, "This was relevant in 1959, and it's still relevant, was relevant in 2002, and is still relevant today in 2022." And asked us to come up with some solutions. So, we looked at a number of solutions and presented them to the bid board, to first, to the Transportation Committee, and then to the full bid board. And some of those solutions, or I'm sorry, some of those options were no parking enforcement at all downtown, other than the 3:00 to 6:00 a.m., which would allow us to maintain our infrastructure. Timed parking. We looked very hard at parking meters, with a good use of technology, to use the parking meters to regulate. And then finally, a simplification of our current ordinance to of a posted restriction and get rid of the big omnibus legislation that it was, and make it something more relevant and enforceable. I note that several, a couple of years ago, Chief Moeller and Mike Huzar, the President of the Bid Board, had a campaign where they put out some warnings and information, and there was somewhat of a response, there was a response to that and changed behavior that was noted by both the city, the bid board themselves, and several of the people who have commented in the last couple of weeks. And so, if we're looking to do that again, it was important to me that we have an ordinance that was clear and enforceable. Good law, as I talked at length about, both to bid and to this body and the public. Good law, law that is understandable, law that is known to the public, and law that is easy to follow. Laws that make it easier to violate than it is to comply. And that is our goal, is compliance, not revenue, not enforcement, not ticket writing. It's compliance, changing behaviors to reflect what are the needs of the community. So, presenting to the bid board first, I believe our first meeting was in, our official meeting with the Traffic, or Transportation Subcommittee was in September, early September, where we started saying, "What do we move forward with?" And it became fairly obvious that they wanted us to look at a simplified. Weren't in favor of the parking meters. Very passionate discussion about time, use of time zones, two-hour, four-hour parking, and a reluctance to embrace that because of really not wanting to put any kind of onus on the customers, not give any barrier to customers coming and using our downtown area. So, that led us to basically get to the point of laissez-faire, no parking, or a simplified version that we could all feel good about having on the books and would be enforceable from the police department's standpoint. We presented to the bid board on November 15th, open for public comment. I heard from quite a few folks at that meeting, and it was all in favor of going forward. And it was a unanimous vote from the bid board for us to move forward. I left that meeting feeling fairly confident that that was the will of the people. That's the type of legislation they wanted. It came before you, and two weeks ago, as you're well aware, and I fully recognize, this board gets more of a public awareness than probably the bid board does, and that's a good thing then, right? That it was brought to your attention, rightfully asked for two weeks or more time, and then we heard some other opinions, and I'm sure you've heard many opinions over the last two weeks. And I guess that brings us to where we're at today, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much. So, for our public comments, if you could please, when you come up, please state your name, your address, and if associated, what business you are associated with. Public comments are not a time for back and forth or questioning, just short and concise comments. If somebody has already said your comment, just know that we hear it and we appreciate it as well. So, with that, I'll open up the public hearing. If anybody from the public would like to speak on the side, feel free to come on up. Who's going to be first?
Got some comments.
There you go. Welcome, sir.
Well, good evening and Merry Christmas to all. Chief, I sympathize. I think I probably gave it to you maybe, because I'm ahead of you, but I feel miserable too, so I apologize for my voice. If it breaks, or if I start coughing. My name is Tony Jason, and I am a building owner, 143 South Main Street, next to Veterans Park. I'm a business owner that occupies that building of a few businesses, and I'm also a seven-year-plus bid board member. Ever since I occupied my property in 2014, I've served on the bid and now currently serve as the current Vice President. So, I was hoping tonight to provide what I would think is a unique perspective, not only as a building owner, business owner, landlord, and also somebody who's been on the bid, and this has been a subject, no question, for the entire time I've been on the bid, and clearly well before my time. If I can maybe fast forward, my property is unique, I guess, in a sense, because it's three stories, it's 22,000 square feet. I have four primary businesses in there, although they're not all mine. And I serve as a landlord, but we, our challenge is, being next to Veterans Park, there's no parking for us. So, when I purchased the building with the intent of fully occupying it, law firm on the first floor, accounting firm second floor, and manufacturing corporate offices, and then my wealth management firm on the first floor, I realized the priority for me is customer parking. So, if I was going to acquire this property, I'm going to have to figure out a solution for employee parking. And it wasn't occupying the Main Street stalls. In front of my building is four stalls to serve a property that probably has at least 50-plus every day, people occupying it as employees or owners or business managers, eight-plus hours a day. Then we have customer traffic. You can imagine the flow of a law firm, an accounting firm, insurance firm, wealth management firm. There's a law. I was going to kick into a boogie there, so you had me close. I hear music, I dance. So, that traffic was a concern for me, because again, all I really saw in front of my building was these four stalls. Yes, there's parking across the street, all that good stuff, but a lot of our clients actually are elderly, and so they do have to traffic over a curb many times, or of course, across the street. So, I had to weigh that. When I was spending the amount of money I did on the property, it wasn't a small ticket to acquire that property. But I got past all of that, because I did a little exploration on the parking situation. And at that time, I discovered there were some permit lots available, and the one that I focused on was the Walnut Street Lot, because it was basically a block or two away from my property. And I recognized, well, my employees are going to walk. It's just the way it is. If I own a big box store and I'm going to sell retail to my customers, I'm going to tell my employees, "Park at the back. Employees in the back, customers up front," so that they can get to the store and come and go freely, especially since that's who I need to survive. I've heard the point that we need employees to make our businesses work, no question. But without customers, I don't need employees. So, if I can find a way to get my customer to my business conveniently and comfortably, it's my problem currently, in the current environment that we have, to figure out a solution for my employees to park. So, I have a combination. I have 17, I think, permits in the Walnut Street Lot. At the time I checked into it, there were that many available. There was plenty of opportunity prior to my entering this community in 2014 for people to have acquired those. And parking was an issue then, but there were 17 available. So, I spend four grand a year, and that's not all the permits I need. I can't get enough. So, my employees then park on the side streets, or they will park at MOA and walk across the roundabout, which is unsafe, actually, for a segment of traffickers. It's kind of a challenging walk to get from there to the back of my building or the front of my building. But at the end of the day, I have a reputation. If you park in the wrong spot, you're in deep trouble, because customers come first. So, the way I see this, and I've heard from, I won't say the opposing side, but counterpoint, is that this is really two separate issues. The first issue is customer parking, and the second is employee parking. There is no one solution that's going to fit both. They need to be dealt with, in essence, separately because of where we currently are. Yes, at their last bid board meeting, Herb made a great presentation of history. I wasn't around then. No offense, Herb, I wasn't born in 1959. But it was a great history, but the reality is that's yesterday, and today is today. And ultimately, yeah, the city had lots available, they sold some off. But at this point, businesses need to survive by having customer traffic first, and they should get the front row of parking. And then, right now, business owners need to find a solution for their employees, and including landlords. I don't want to forget them and their tenants. So, I think this issue should be dealt with in two ways. One, we need to pass this common sense ordinance. It just makes sense to prioritize our customers first. Then, I think the council, maybe working with the bid board and others, get back to the drawing board and come up with a solution for employee parking. It still has to be dealt with, but it shouldn't be in place of this common sense solution that is going to continue to maintain Main Street as customer parking. In Herb's presentation at the bid board, he did mention there's 300 to 400, not sure where we got the number from, but 300 to 400 employees that need to park downtown. Well, if they all did, there'd be no place for customers to park. So, obviously, the solution is two separate issues, and I know I've been repeating myself. So, I'm hopeful that the council will hear tonight more positive support. It was my understanding, our update to the last bid board meeting was a few folks stepped up and said, "Hey, what about employee parking? Maybe we need to rethink this more," and that's why we're here a few weeks later. And it's a valid point, but it's a separate issue, and I hope we can keep it separate. Jay pointed out that many times you always just hear from a few negative opinions, because most people who support it don't bother to tell you they support it or call you. And that's reality, but I'm hoping tonight you'll hear my support, and I want to remind you that you had, as the chief pointed out, the unanimous support of the bid board, which is a representation of business and/or building owners downtown, and they unanimously supported it. With all due respect to Herb, he was not there at that meeting when we all agreed unanimously support it for this past council meeting. So, he made some valid points, but I don't think I heard him ever say, "Don't do this." It was just, "We need to deal with employee parking as a separate issue." I think even more importantly than the bid board, I think we have the support of our police chief. It makes sense. It's enforceable, and there are just a few people that are really needing a behavior adjustment. I will just, final comment, I will mention prior to the current chief, we had Chief Moeller. I had the privilege of working with him for a while on this issue before his retirement, and we had gotten to, in 2019, 2020, a solution. I don't think it ever got to the council, because COVID interrupted that. But we, as the bid board, I've been on the Transportation Committee, the Riverwalk Committee, you name the committees, I've been on it. And we've discussed this parking issue, and we finally arrived, I thought, at a common sense approach, which was citation enforcement. And I think over time, behavior would have changed. I'm the one that said, "It should be 50 bucks." I think it needs to hurt for those few people that are breaking the law. That's what they're doing. Now, I initially took possession of my property and began to enforce immediately of those who are repeat violators. It doesn't take long in your block to know who the problem is. They drive the same car every day. And so, I'd simply put a little note on their car saying, "Hey, this is it. This is, you know, just be fair, be respectful." And as soon as we got to that agreement, I think it was early 2020, and yes, we agreed that we would put a postcard on people's cars to say, "Hey, this new ordinance is coming, there'll be some additional enforcement." The streets were empty. It worked. The challenge is, when COVID hit, the streets ended up empty anyway. And so, there really was no more follow-through, and then there was a transition between both of the position of the chief. And I just greatly respect that when the current chief came to the Transportation Committee and presented very viable options, we ended with what we currently have as a proposed ordinance. I truly hope you consider that there was full unanimous support, including from our chief, and we get this done tonight with a commitment that with the board, I'll be on another committee if I have to, and this council, that we find a solution long-term for employee parking, but it is not letting them park on Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Gaetha Hillman. We have the Business Grand Care Systems, we're 303 North Main Street in the Oak Hill Building, and that is a long way from any authorized parking for employees. And so, I realize that we have to do something. I think a lot of employees do have a place they can park in, because it hasn't been enforced, they don't, and they do park on Main Street. So, I agree, we need to try to get anyone who has a place to park there, but there are some extenuating circumstances. We have a couple of spots that we can park, but there are a couple of people that won't have a place without walking a half a mile away to a parking spot. So, I'd just like to reiterate, I'd love for the city to come up with some kind of parking. I know we used to, I've been in and out of downtown for 40 years, and we used to have this spot behind, on Mill Street, and that was a city lot. And people paid double because there's no parking on North Main Street, and the city sold it to someone. So, I would like the city to come back and help out, but one of the, I thought, I don't want to come here with no solution at all. There could be exceptions. It's perhaps we can, if people need to have an exception, they can register their situation, and if it does seem extenuating that they cannot possibly find a reasonable place for an employee or two to park without them using, maybe not Main Street, but in our case, down Mill Street. So, I'd just like there to be a little leniency there and some options for employees. That's my say.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. I'm Lori Winters, the Executive Director at the Museum of Wisconsin Art, 205 Veterans Avenue. Thank you for allowing the public forum for this evening. I first wanted to say, I totally agree with you, Tony. It's all about the customers, absolutely. So, with that said, do have a bit of a caveat. I think what you're trying to accomplish is really important, but I don't want you to be misled by mislabeling or not fully accurate labeling. The lot that MOA owns, and we do own that lot, it is not a public city lot, is, was purchased from the city in 2018. We have been maintaining, snow plowing, maintaining, tarring, picking up drug needles in the summer from that lot for four years, since we purchased it. And it has been, as part of our agreement in that purchase, we agreed, because we want to be great neighbors to our people on Main Street, we agreed that, you know, we're happy to accommodate some overflow parking. We are happy to accommodate farmer's market in the morning on Saturdays. We are happy to deal with the one-off experiences where we all need to share whatever parking we can. What is potentially a problem for us is that if our parking stalls, 73, are suddenly taken over by employees who work on Main Street, where are our customers going to park? Our customers who bring in, who brought in last year $2.3 million in tourism revenue to the city of West Bend, 3.1 in 2019 before the pandemic. Where are our customers, where are our employees going to park if suddenly all the employees from Main Street, all of the building owners on Main Street, are forced to go elsewhere? So, the problem is not so simply resolved. Again, we want to be accommodating. We have said that from the very beginning. We have great neighbors, great partners with our restaurants and our shops on Main Street. We consider it a great advantage to be in the community. But what are you going to do to our customers? So, we ask, when I asked this afternoon in a phone call, "What's the impact? What are the real numbers? How many people are going to be looking for parking?" No one was able to give me an answer. You haven't done the research. You can't tell one of the largest business owners in this community what the impact is going to be. I suggest you just delay it, a decision, until you're fully informed, until you can inform the business owners what the real impact is. Is it 10 cars? No problem, we're happy to accommodate. Is it 20? Yeah, maybe. Is it 50 or 100? Not so happy. Tell us what the real numbers are before you make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, sir.
Hi, my name is Richard Rochelsky, owner of West Bend Music Academy, co-owner, downtown West Bend, 102 North Main Street. As part of the bid district, I was not at any of the meetings where this was decided and who decided it for me. I didn't get emails about the meeting. I didn't know about it. I was told through the email 11 days ago and typed up a reply to everybody. I'm not going to read the whole thing, try to keep it short, but this is my chance to give my business a voice. I've talked to everyone at the business, and just to get some relevant viewpoints. And I think we would like to ultimately just see some tolerances to this made, where it's not so black and white. I'm just going to use this as just a quick thing to go through. I have several employees, teachers, you know, private lesson music teachers, that are 60 up to 82 years old. If I saw part of the ordinance, you want to get more elderly downtown safely, parking spots for elderly. If that's important, I think there needs to be a waiver for elderly employees as well. So, it's not just elderly customers, because none of them would be able to walk that .3 to .5 miles that we're talking about here. And I gladly will. I bought a house close to downtown. I walk most of the time to work. There are, once again, getting to those exceptions. The city doesn't remove garbage for us businesses. I have to remove that garbage out of my building. When I do a buy-in with a company, I get anywhere between $5,000 and $30,000 worth of stuff. And we get a lot of boxes all at once. I need to haul that out, and there's no room for a dumpster, no room for a garbage can by my building. It's just the infrastructure of downtown. It's building, you know, business after business, there's not a lot of room there. So, during the day, I'll park, and my employees during the slow time will load up that garbage into my car so I can take it to the dump. And I don't know how we're going to keep up with that if we don't have some type of tolerance for just a loading zone, even if it's shared loading zones for businesses, just a spot here and there that we could use to do that during the day. The dump closes at 2:00 p.m. I can't go there after the 8:00 p.m. parking and put all the trash in my car overnight and then bring it the next day. I just, well, I would prefer not to, that would be disgusting. So anyways, that's just something I wanted to bring up as well. We have another worker there, Joe, who's, a lot of you guys know, Joe is, he does just, he'll fill and do anything, running sounds, delivering product, delivering pianos. Mayor Jenkins, I think he ran sound for you at one of your performances that you volunteered for, and I think we provided those speakers. And Joe's constantly doing that kind of thing. Now, he's 62, so maybe, maybe he would fall into that elderly, I don't know. He's a pretty, he's in shape, he wouldn't have to, but he, he's constantly delivering product, not product, I'm sorry, his services. And if somebody is running a gig, the Theater, Downtown Association, Different Events, Hometown Foundation, Joe is constantly running to the shop, grabbing gear, and delivering it to them in order to save the day. And normally, we don't even charge for that, it's just, "Oh, you need these cables, you need a microphone, you need Enchantment in the Park, we had students performing there." And they had no microphone, and so we just ran and brought one over. And so, that kind of thing, we wouldn't be able to do quickly if Joe can't have a spot there. So, that's just something that I wanted to bring up. Yes, I believe the customers are number one. They should have as many of the spots as possible, but what about the elderly, the handicap, and the disabled employees that work downtown? And I have employees that are in all three of those categories. Do they get a waiver? Do they get some type of tolerance that they would be able to park nearby, because they might not be able to walk that distance? And I can't afford to lose people. So, it's not about me changing my attitude, or that we're being selfish or greedy. The young ones, yeah, I'll tell them to walk, that's fine, but for those other ones... But for those other ones who just have issues with, with being able to walk that distance, that is a problem. I'm just going to see if I had anything else here. Oh, yes, I do. I have students of mine who I pick up from assisted living, and for years, they would, they would taxi, and they would wait two, two hours or more to get picked up. And then I'd watch them sit there while I'm teaching my other lessons, and they're, they're waiting another two hours at my shop staring out the window looking for the taxi. So after that kept happening, I said, this is, this is ridiculous. I'm going to start picking them up and bringing them to the lesson and then bringing them back. Sometimes it's Joe who I brought up. He'll, he'll pick them up and bring them back for me if I can't make it that day. That's something that we do, and we have to, a lot of these students, they might be in a wheelchair. They might be someone that I have to hold their arm and walk them into the building and walk them back to the car and, and help them sit down. It's not something where I can park that far away and then help them get inside. I think there need to be tolerances for certain scenarios, and I'm worried about it being black and white, where, am I going to get a ticket now? Because we're trying, we're trying to do the right thing. And it's not about, once again, it's not about me being just the owner who wants my own spot. I, I don't. I did type up, because I don't know how these things go. This is my first time attending a meeting like this. I typed up some, well, what if, what if they say, well, what do you want to do? You, you know, you're complaining. Do you have any ideas? I'll try to be quick with this. I had a few. Maybe there are things you guys already discussed at the other meetings, but I'll try to be quick. I, I didn't hear some of these said, and I thought this might be a good idea. As far as concerning the handicap and elderly, and I, once again, I saw that as one of the first things in the ordinance, you want them to, to be able to park downtown. On my block, I think there might only be one good spot for, for handicap. And I have a teacher who's handicapped, and I have several customers. They're always fighting over that same spot. So maybe, maybe just more handicap spots, if that's not already in the plans for the, I know you're tearing it up this summer. Maybe there's more going down there already, and that's fine. So I'll move on to the next one. What about senior citizen parking? Other places do it. If we really want the spots for the elderly who cannot, who cannot walk those distances, why don't we have a senior citizen parking planned or, or going into effect, signs for that? I think that would help. I think we care about the accessibility of elderly getting downtown. That just might be something we could do. And, and I know with the congestion, what I was thinking, if you can't do it, do handicap and senior citizen at every business? What about every other? What about every three? Let's start just looking at it and seeing, may, maybe there is a solution that, that will help more for that. As far as moving past that, is the customer parking spots. One thing I've noticed, I had a student come in just on, on Tuesday, and he said, hey, I was going to park over at the Norbert there, but there's a sign there that says customer parking only, and so I didn't want to take up their spot, so I went somewhere else. And I thought, why, why don't we do something like that where each business gets one or two spots that, you know, music academy parking only? And I understand that might not be feasible. It's not my job. I'm just throwing it out there. It's, I know it's, you guys know the details of that, and it's a lot more complex than, than I understand. I wouldn't expect you to know all the operations that go on by me, so I'm not assuming that I know what goes into that. But that's just an idea. More signs for that, maybe just specific. The other reason I bring that up too, on Thursday night, you know, the, the theater, they had that great, it's, I think it was, It's a Wonderful Life playing, and I had several students that came in and, I had to park a mile away. What's going on tonight? And I, well, there's, you know, there's a movie probably just taking up more parking. So for that kind of thing, when there are just any bigger event going on, is that overflow parking, all the customers, are they going to be able to get into my business or just to the one big thing that's going on? So I thought if there was at least one spot where I could get at least one customer in during those busy times, that might be a nice thing to just have one. And I know it would be hard, that enforcing that and everything were probably really hard as well, and I don't understand all that goes into that. Honestly, I was thinking if, in the terms of bringing up the signs and all of that, it, it's almost like strongly encouraged, so it, it wouldn't be enforceable. So it's going against what you had brought up. But I, but I know if I go to, to Main Street Cafe and I accidentally park at Jeff's Spirits, and I see the sign, I'm like, oh, shoot, I'm going to move my car voluntarily because it's strongly encouraged. And, and I want to respect those businesses that want to get in their patrons. So that's just another thought that I had.
Richard, if you, if you mind, I just want to be respectful for everybody else. Do you have any other quick points you can give to us?
Absolutely. So as far as, let's see.
And if you have something that you feel comfortable, we can, you can hand that over to us too, and I can pass it around for the older of you to look at.
Sure, yeah.
If I wanted that just for the sake of time.
I made a bunch of copies.
Oh, okay.
For those, I mean, it was just like last minute, jotted down. Let's see here. That was pretty much it. There's, one last thing was, because that was all just short-term ideas. I still think a long-term solution regarding this would, would be a parking garage, to be honest. I don't know exactly where. I think the best spot, and, and I'm sure it's been said before, but if we could move the post office in aerial view, it's, it's centered downtown. Other cities have done it, you know, I've researched it a tiny bit, and it's a 76 parking space lot, I think. You do two stories high, three stories high, you start to see the numbers. And, you know, that, that would help with giving designated spots to the employees. It would solve that. You know, it doesn't have to be there, but that's just one idea. West Bend is only growing. That, that apartment building going up north of 33, when that gets filled out, the congestion's only going to get worse. What are we doing to meet that growth long-term? And that's just something I wanted to bring up as well. I'm not saying it's done overnight. I'm just saying it's something to think about so we can fit everybody downtown that we want.
Thank you. Thanks for the feedback. Tell Joe that the mayor says thank you as well. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Karen Betts. I own Clock In at 215 North Main Street. I was trying to be respectful of the fact that, you know, you encouraged us, Mr. Mayor, to not repeat perhaps what's already been shared. So I just wanted to call to the council's attention and remind you to think about any letters, any emails, any phone calls and voice messages that you received from myself or other business owners, residents of the downtown area. Again, we don't want to reiterate everything that was said there. I know you received them from me, all three of those, and from many of my other co-owners and co-managers of businesses. So I just encourage you to keep that in mind as you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, sir.
Hello, my name is Gene Frank. I'm president, or the chairman of the Board of Elders at Emmaus Bible Church, 220 North Sixth Avenue. No, we're not on Main Street, but the construction comes right up to our front door. We're next to the Washington House, and you look at our front door, there's street there. My concern is that, keep in mind that parking on Main Street is a seven-day-a-week thing. Most of our customers come Sunday morning. And we heavily utilize the parking on the west side of the triangle on Sixth Avenue. And there's temptation for whoever wins the bid to consider trying to use that parking to park your equipment on a Sunday. So parking is seven days a week, and our customers utilize that heavily on a Sunday. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
I am Lucy Nagel, and I live on Decorah Street, and I have several concerns. More of them are the immediate where the street will be torn up on Main Street, and the other things are affected as well. But this is the more short term. I ask or insist that the construction company hired to repair Main Street in 2023 use a metal plate to cover the road for nighttime use. Road repairs are common in communities.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. If your, if your comments are directed about the reconstruction, that's not germane to what we're talking about tonight. Tonight's just about the parking ordinance? Do you have comments pertaining to that?
I do.
Okay.
Public parking lot behind BMO and Dooley's. Two-thirds of that parking lot appears to be filled with equipment, building supplies, barricades. My son's car was totaled a few weeks ago. He lives at 262 North Main. He's lived there about two years. Used that parking area the whole time, no problem. But now the lot's filled with equipment. And a delivery truck backed into it, and he said, I never saw your car. It was totaled, and another car had $3,000 worth of damage, all of that. So that lot has a lot of debris. It's not organized. There's a sign that says parking for Lot, Lot 2. And I did some research, and I said, what is Lot 2? What does that mean? And they said, anybody who lives on the second floor of any of these buildings. I said, really? So it's not real clear. So he's, he has a spot now at the fire department, or he will. He doesn't have a car because his was totaled. Parking, oh, the M-O-W parking. There was, and I understand there are more concerns, but they talked about using the bridge. Well, I don't know who's going to maintain a bridge in winter, shoveling, salting, and may use salt over the river. Is that a runoff? Is that another concern? I had a, a thought. I went to Fish Days, and I parked in the Walmart parking lot, took a shuttle to the festivities, the functions. It was beautiful. No one had to worry about where to find your car, you know, to get anything. So couldn't we do a shuttle for some time? I don't know, some time. Fleet Farm, there are different lots that maybe would accommodate. To ride a shuttle, maybe not charged, but as an incentive, give them a coupon for some store that they're going to go to, or if they come back, show their receipt. I parked at the museum for years and never paid parking because you bring a receipt of what you spent at the museum. So a shuttle could maybe be an option. Relocating the farmer's market, and again, this is parking, but it's going to be a lot of parking. My friend said, you know, I'm just not going to go. Going to the farmer's market is wonderful. What are we rated? The best in the state. I mean, wonderful, and we're going to give it up. I, there's got to be a better option than going to a certain lot and then parking all over. I don't know. And I don't know if I'm going to be able to do it either. So that would be sad to lose that. West Bend's a great community. The downtown needs to function. Many businesses have worked very hard to create settings that are fun to eat at, shop at, and be part of. There are a number of stores that are putting signs up saying they are leaving. They're not going to keep their store. And I can tell you privately, I don't want to, because I didn't say I'm coming here and telling, but it's going to happen. And you've worked so hard. West Bend is a good community. There must be a way, at least for the, the next year. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments pertaining to the parking ordinance before us? Welcome.
Hi, I'm Sheila. I have a business at 229 and 136 South Main. I'm not as concerned about the loading and unloading, because I do that myself in the morning before usually eight, usually to pick up my cardboard and my garbage. But the problem I have is when there are seven to nine stalls around my business, and people park there for seven to eight hours a day. I mean, I don't know what, you know, that's why we're here. I'm not going to beat a dead horse, but it's just something that I feel like needs to be taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. My name is Wesley. I am the owner of The Anecdote at 302 North Main Street. Basically, what she just said, I agree with that. Like, I need to get to my business to do drop-offs, you know, if I got to run to the store or something like that. But like, eight hours a day is happening a lot. So I don't know if there's a way of just like, business owners, building owners, and landlords can, you know, be in charge of making sure that their employees are not parking there, you know. But I definitely have to get there for an hour a day, or two hours a day, or something like that. But nobody should be parked there for eight, nine hours. That's it.
Thank you.
Good evening. Kevin Schultz, Mountain Outfitters, owner, 109 South Main and also 111 South Main. I talked to most of you today or left voice messages for you. I think the underlying problem isn't businesses unloading, loading, or circumstances where they have an employee who needs to park. The underlying issue is employees will park six, seven, eight doors down in front of another business, and then walk to their business, and there's open spots in front. So they realize that they shouldn't be parking or taking up parking in front of their own business or the business that they're employed at. So I think that's where a lot of the frustration comes with, with the people who want this ordinance. It's the employees that basically, that are, they're just, they're not good employees for the downtown, I guess, or business owners aren't enforcing it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Sure, why not? You're lucky I don't make you restate your name for us.
I'm glad to.
Go ahead.
I was just taking notes for our benefit of our bid board. I'm not sure if anybody else is, because we, obviously, I'd like to report back to them all this good input. I just wanted to, I guess, summarize, of the eight people that spoke, with the exception of a two, I'm not so sure what the topic was, every single one of them was about employees' parking on Main Street. It wasn't about customer parking. The ordinance is to give customers the right to park, and what I suggested is we find a solution yet, because we haven't clearly, and it's clearly a problem, to the employee parking issue. And as far as the Moa director, great point. Unfortunately, I shared with you that I know two people from my building, not my employees, use your lot, because we just can't get enough permits. So I just hope that we can get this part passed and start enforcing, especially before construction, and come back to the table and focus on the issue everybody's asking about tonight, which in my opinion is unrelated to customer parking. Employee parking is preventing it. So clearly, there needs to be a fix. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
It's actually not even a public hearing. Just, just public comments, so. I'll just ask anybody else? Going once? Going twice? All right. Well, we'll end our public comments, and we'll move on to number 22, which is the ordinance amending Section 7.075 and repealing and recreating Section 7.085 of the municipal code relating to downtown parking and parking permit lots and regulations. Before we get into that, just want to say thank you. Thank you to everybody for coming out. I know it's not easy, standing up there in front of all these people, in front of us, and letting us know what's on your mind, but we really do appreciate your feedback regardless of how you stand on this issue. So I'm going to ask first for a motion on this item as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Kayler, were you, were you motion?
Yes.
I'll give that to Kayler and Model, and then I'll open it up for discussion. John, yeah?
Yes. Couple things. Number one, I received numerous calls this past two weeks. Alderman Kayler mentioned that we should give the opportunity for you people to speak, and you did. And 95% of the calls that I received or emails were all concerned about their customers not having a place to park. And they suggest that we support the ordinance right now. And the reason I'm going to support it is this isn't etched in stone. This is literally a stepping stone to prevent something down the road. We have construction coming up in 2023. It's going to be a mass chaos. It's going to be a mass chaos down there. And if we do not have any ordinance for the chief to control this customers versus employees, we're just going to have a mass chaos. And it's going to be almost impossible for the police department to enforce. This is a stone that we can, or this is a step that we can move forward, get everyone educated. This isn't trying, like the chief said, he's not trying to make a revenue out of this or writing tickets. It is an education to the customers that they have a right to park down there and the employees have to walk. A good, it was mentioned that all box stores, you go to Fleet Farm, where are all their employees parked? They're parked all the way down on the end. You go to Menards, they're parked all the way out on the other end. They have all of the front of the stores open for customers. And this is what we're trying to do right now. So we can get through this construction area. Once it's finished, we will be able to increase parking spaces because all the bump outs will be, majority will be moved, and we're going to gain a large number of parking stalls, which will afterwards probably open up some of the side streets for some of the employees to park. But at this point right now, it's, we need to make sure we take care of the customers because it's going to be tough for each and every one of the business people downtown while this construction is going on. And if we can try and help you keep things going for this year, it's just going to make it so much easier as an education to the public right now. So I'm going to be voting in favor of it because I think that we need to do something to get this thing rolling. And the question about crossing the bridge that was asked, I know for a fact that the Park and Recreation or Park and Forestry Department, they maintain those bridges. Every time there's a snowstorm or every time there is any type of ice or anything, they're maintaining, they're on top of it. So you do not have to worry about crossing those bridges. Those bridges will be open at all times, except for the snowstorm we got coming this year. You might have to take a couple, couple of days off. But that's my viewpoint and I appreciate you all showing up and viewing your points. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick. And I believe I saw Alderman Kayler saying, yeah?
I just got a question regarding the Moa lot. Being that we don't own that lot, can we actually designate that as?
There's an agreement that states it's public parking. That was part of the transaction.
Okay.
If you'd like, do you mind jumping onto the mic?
Yeah, when I saw the diagram, I thought it was a little bit misleading too because they're all in blue and it all says public. It's actually a private lot with an easement that we gave to the city because we wanted to be, you know, good neighbors. And we were happy to do that as part of the agreement. But that meant that people were still parking on Main Street as they had always been. They're not being forced, now they are being forced essentially to park elsewhere. When I asked what the impact was, again, I said if it's 10 or 20 cars, you know, that's manageable. But no one could tell me the impact. Does that mean that people who are visiting Moa are now going to have to park on Wisconsin Avenue when it's filled with employees from Main Street who are parking there for seven or eight hours a day? And we have a lot, I mean, there are people in this room I know who park there. And I'm fine to do that because I feel that on a daily basis, it does not impact. But you're just changing the whole game. And, you know, if we have visitors who come and are not happy with their experience, then, you know, will they come back? Will they continue to drive the tourism dollars that benefit the city and this community? So the public statement as it is now on that document is misleading and it should be designated as privately owned with public access. We maintain it. You guys want to maintain it? You can pay the snowbills.
Thanks, Lori. I've been told that there was a brief comment from Alderman Dolnick.
I had a question, since you're already here, ma'am. Ma'am, since you're already up there, I didn't want you to walk back and forth.
Yeah, thank you.
When is the most business, this ordinance does not, is not enforced on weekends? Are you telling me that that lot of yours is filled with people during the weekdays? Because that's not been my observation. When do you have most of your visitors?
Most of our visitors are on a weekend. We do have problems already with farmer's market, but we fail because farmer's market ends at 11:00.
Let's go back to weekdays. So the most of your visitors are on weekends?
That is correct. Most of our business is on the weekends.
This is not enforced on the weekends?
But we do have events. So we may have an entirely full lot when someone comes for a special talk during the week. And we're now, you know, post pandemic, we're now back fully operating. So on a Tuesday morning, we may have a talk from 10:00 to 11:30 that will fill the entire lot for an hour and a half.
Okay, thank you.
So there are times during the week when it is filled. And now that we are back from our post, now that we are into the post pandemic world, our events are now fully scheduled again as of probably September 1st.
How many of those do you have a year?
We have 180 events a year. 180.
That fill your lot?
So that, you know, I'm going to be honest, I don't know that they fill our lot. But on a Wednesday morning, when we do something like Art and Wellness, when we have 50 people who, you know, and they are all, they're all older, they're all in their 60s. So every Wednesday morning, that lot is full.
Okay. Can the city attorney clarify the situation?
I was just going to ask him to do the same. Go ahead.
So the agreement that the city entered into with Moa states, Moa grants to the city and its successor and assigns for the benefit of the public a perpetual, non-exclusive parking easement, providing continuous uninterrupted access for public parking on the property. There is an exception for special events, which are 14 days out of the year. It, so I'm not trying to, you know, address the potential impact, but it's very clear that this is public parking. This was a very key point of that transaction, that there is a parking, public parking easement. While it may be a privately owned lot, it still is public parking. And I'll note that it's a similar situation on the lot for Westman Medical where they do have a specific number of spots that are, that they could, they could address and reserve those for their business. That was part of the agreement. But the rest of that lot is public parking outside of the specific spots they can label as Westman Medical only. So both of those lots are privately owned, but have public parking easements.
And we were very happy to do that because again, we want to be good neighbors. The environment, you're now changing the environment in which that decision was made.
Did the city build the lot?
So yes, we owned the lot. We built the lot and Moa wanted to receive the lot. And the only way that we would have entered into an agreement for this was to maintain public parking. The 14 days that Ian referenced is a 14 day notice that they have to give us before a special event. It's not 14 actual event days, but.
No, I believe.
You know, some of our bigger events, like Art and Chalk Fest, we closed down the parking lot. We, for our Blooming Holidays, another big event that's an entire weekend, where we have people not only parking in the lot, but we have people parking on Wisconsin Avenue. They're parking on Veterans Avenue. We do exhibition openings where we have 400 to 500 people. And they're, they're parking on Wisconsin Avenue and they're parking in the cast iron lot. We have big events. So during the weekday, if you come on a Tuesday at 2:00 in the afternoon, pretty slow, be easy to find a place to park. But are there times when we do have more than 100 people, up to 400, 500 people during the year? Quite often. And, you know, for Art and Chalk Fest, 20,000 to 24,000 people. For Blooming Holidays, 8,000 people. So what's that going to mean for, you know, for our people? I mean, I feel like, you know, Moa has gone out of its way. I mean, we wanted to own the lot so we could properly maintain it, do proper snow removal and, you know, keep it up in an aesthetic way. Fill the potholes when they occur, maintain it in an appropriate way. And for the one-off parking, I had no problem with that. As I said, there are people in this audience who park there. No problem. There are people who park at the restaurant on the corner. No problem. But you're changing the environment, which will have an impact. And all I want to know is, what's that impact? Is it 10 cars, 20, 50, 100? What is the impact?
All right, I'm going to end it there. Thanks, Ms. Winters. And I'll kick back over to Alderman Kayler in case he had any other questions because we've got to go off track. Okay. Any other comments from the Alderman? I'll look to my left here. Yes, sir. Take it away.
Okay, I was just going to say to, oh gosh, hang on just a moment. I may mispronounce his name. Is it Mr. Ruchalski from?
Ruchalski, yeah.
Hi. So you raised some points. The police chief has assured us that this will be by complaint only. So first of all, and then, so your concern about some of your, I mean, I'm 67. I guess I'm elderly in your eyes. I don't feel like it. I know, I know. My, my sons tell me I'm elderly and then they chuckle. It's my complaint only, first of all. The other thing is too, if anyone is handicapped, they are not subject to any regulations. As long as they have the license plate or the tag and the chief went into that a couple of weeks ago. So it isn't quite as black and white as you may be fearing. That's all I was going to say.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask a question to the chief. I could, what would, would you favor a, I guess, an exception process for a, for a one-off, somebody that needed a, you know, a two hours a week access to, you know, to empty garbage or whatever it happens to be?
Sorry. Sure, as Alderman Dolnick explained, anyone with a handicapped tag is by state statute exempt from time restrictions. And we believe that falls under the same intent of the law. So they wouldn't be subject to this, to this ordinance. And again, and, you know, we've spoke, I've spoken about this quite a bit over the last several months, so I'm sure I forgot to say tonight. I guess my point was it's not revenue driven, it's compliance driven, it's behavior driven. And that is a point I know I didn't make tonight, but it is not intended to be a catch. We got you because you stopped to pick up your cardboard. That's not how this ordinance is going to work. It's not how it works in any posted restrictions. A person dropping off pizza at a private lot that's posted for residents only doesn't get a citation for parking in the lot while they drop off pizza. It's not how it works. This is for the person that is intentionally violating. We heard from our group tonight, they know who they are already. They've, we heard at our last meeting that there's lists already being compiled that tell us these are the people that are parking there from eight, nine, 10 hours a day. That's who we're looking to change the behavior. Not the person that's stopping to pick up the sound system to deliver to the mayor's volunteer session. Not the person who is dropping off a student. Thank you, by the way. I really appreciate your presentation, not only because you pointed out some concerns, but some solutions as well, all of you, actually. I'm really proud of all of you for being here. It's not for that one-off. We certainly, we'll be down there and we'll dedicate our resources to it, to making sure that we comply with the ordinance if that's what this board wants us to do and our council wants us to do, and that's what the citizens want, we'll be there. But, you know, we, we have a lot of priorities going on in our city right now. We will not be spending six, seven squads to catch the one person that's dropping off lunch for their coworker. It's not what this is about. This is about compliance for the people who are intentionally, intentionally violating the nature of it. One of our great citizens tonight mentioned the fact that it should be self-governed by the employers, the tenants, and the landlords. I think every one of us in this room agrees. The only reason I'm standing in front of you is because that's not happening and hasn't happened. So it's the only reason I'm standing in front of you tonight and we're having this wonderful discussion, wonderful example of democracy, is because that's not happening and we need to have us step in and provide more of an incentive because those employers, tenants, and landlords aren't doing that. To hear Mr. Schultz talk about the fact that it's a common place to have an employer park eight stalls down and in front of someone else's business and then walk to theirs because they realize the value is deeply disappointing. I'm crabby when I'm sick. But that's deeply disappointing, right? And we know that's happening. Those are the people this ordinance is aimed for. This is not a catch-all, a catch-you. It's not what it's for. The current ordinance, we're not changing anything. This has been in place for 20 some years, actually since 1959, we were told, and other options since then. We're simply clarifying it, giving us more opportunities and making it better law so the citizens know. So the person that's going to get the ticket hung on them, because we've mentioned this too, and I'm sorry if I didn't mention it to this group or maybe some of the new people tuning in. But it's not, January 1st is an open season. If it passes, we're going to start with an educational process. We're going to issue warnings, much like we do with winter parking. We'll probably extend it longer since it's such a new thing. We're going to give everyone the opportunity to be good neighbors, as Ms. Winters talked about, good neighbors. And when they're not being good neighbors, it's because they intentionally chose not to. We're going to be looking for the people that are parking for those eight hours. I appreciated Mrs. Winter, Ms. Winters' comments. I understand, I was, I mean, I think it's a great thing if you listen to what she's saying. She's concerned about her customers' parking. She's concerned about her customers' parking. So great presentation that talks about two separate items. How do we address that? But I think she's identified that we do have that issue, the downtown. I understand that she's concerned with specifically her entity. We do close down and I'll make a, probably, because again, I'm crabby when I'm sick, but we close down the roads. We close down the roads over the weekends for Chalk Fest and put significant amount of staffing, the city does, our police department does, to make sure it's a safe, great event. And it is a great event and it draws people to the city and we'll continue to do that. But we're being good neighbors as well. So this is a compromise ordinance that comes up to say, let's put something in place that gives us an opportunity. I'd all love a couple of parking decks down there, right? But that's not reality. I guess that's what the next group can look at, maybe. That's not a police issue. That's a community issue. So that's not something that's going to happen now. But what is something that's going to happen now is our ability to, we have to address the ordinance that's on the book. I realize I'm rambling, so I'll, I'll be quick. Did I answer at all your question?
Yes, you did.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask the chief a quick question?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just, I had forgotten from before, the annual parking permit renewal notice letter had a deadline of December 9th, but this thing has been in a state of flux. So does it have to be extended or do you think that's not an issue?
I don't see that as an issue since the ordinance is still on the books that prohibits them from parking. We just haven't been enforcing it. It's not good law, but the permit process is still deeply in place. I'm sure if you're still on a permit, there's, I don't know if there's too many left, but if you, are there any? Yeah, yeah. If you haven't gotten one by now, you probably need to get down on it.
Thanks.
Sure.
Any other comments? Yes, sir.
I guess I'll close it out. I just want to thank everybody who responded. That was one of the things that we brought up last council meeting was that we hadn't heard enough information, that there was still questions out there and we reached out to our constituents. That's what government by the people and for the people is about. This has been a good lesson. I mean, it tugs on some people's heartstrings. We've gotten some good information. Tony, great plan, you know, talking about the different, different issues. It's separate issues, but it's got to start somewhere, correct? So I thank the people that responded. A lot of, a lot of my emails and comments that I heard had a lot to do with construction and I understand those people have those questions. But again, right now we're addressing the first, the first step, okay? That those questions will be addressed. Those concerns will be addressed as that construction nears and gets better, correct, Jay? I know it's already been talked about and you'll hear more about it, but we're talking about the issue at hand and I believe that this is the correct way to go. So thank you, Tony.
Thank you. I think Alderman Alton had another question. Go ahead.
Yeah, you got out, got away from me somehow. Yeah, I also am glad we extended this comment period because one thing I had gotten was all comments in the negative. And since we opened it up, I've gotten a lot of comments, you know, that this is a good idea, we should move forward. good idea, we should move forward with it. I have a question, and I guess this is to Ian. I understand we are not able to, we are not able to commit a future council to an action. Can we ask that a, an agenda item be, you know, that the clerk place an agenda item for discussion, you know, based on certain, like, the completion of the construction? When the construction completes, can we request that the clerk place an agenda item for discussion?
So, I would say you can at any point in time give a heads-up to the city administrator or city clerk that, hey, when construction wraps up and ever the parking's all open, and we see what the parking patterns are, once that's done, we'd like to re, put this on the agenda. You can also always request, you know, any older person could request that it be placed back on the engine, agenda for discussion. So, is it a great idea to put a, you know, please put this on the agenda for October 1st, 2023? No, that's probably not the greatest idea, but you can always request, you know, that they keep it in mind for a future agenda, and raise it for the chief of police's attention as well, because, you know, I think all of, you know, all of, everybody is, everybody, I, as the discussions have gone, I've kept my eye on stuff, and I fully acknowledge that a year and a half from now, we may be having a different discussion about, you know, what part of the parking zone, you know, we had that discussion last time. The Veterans Avenue, the customer-only parking on Veterans Avenue, it's certainly crucial next, next year with the construction.
Right.
See what happens after that, and you can have a discussion later.
Alderman Allen, I added it in my calendar for review in October. Well, you guys did a similar thing with the scooter ordinance when you passed that, that you asked to review that coming here. Thanks.
I would just like to say I'm going to be supporting this as well. I didn't have quite the, the favorables percentage that Alderman Butch like I had, but I, I had it running roughly seven to three. So, 70% are strongly in favor.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I had 15 either phone calls or emails over the last couple of weeks, and they were eight to seven against it. So, I had more people reach out to me that wanted me to not vote in favor of this. As a business owner, I can sympathize, and, you know, sitting here at quarter to eight at night, I still don't know how I'm gonna vote in three minutes, because I, I see it both ways. As a business owner, I would be concerned about employees and employee retention right now. As a person who used to work in the Centrum Building, I get it. I used to park right outside in the back and would walk in. We were never told by our boss that they, we couldn't park there, but I was running in and out sometimes, three or four times in a day with my arms full of things, and having to make several trips. And there was a gentleman who did a printer who called me about that. He said he makes many deliveries in a day, and he's bringing in heavy boxes of paper in and out. I also don't think that we need to have the police make winners and losers out of people and have to decide who, if they're gonna enforce it or not. So, I think we either need to enforce it, or have something that says we, there is no parking restrictions. We need to make that decision. When I was working at the Centrum Building, though I worked there for like six hours a day, I became customers of the restaurants and bars, and I ate way too much Laughing Mountain popcorn. So, though I worked there, I was customers of many of your businesses. I would get flowers from down there in the little shops. I have concerns about the people who live there. I don't have, I don't think there's a great, easy solution for any of it. I think that our, we have businesses that do not have any customers at all, that maybe they chose that particular business to have their computer repair shop, or whatever it is. All of their customers are over the phone or something, and they chose that particular space to run their business, because there was parking right outside their door. So, that's really all I have to say. I'm glad that's not a safety issue. It could be worse, but that's my input.
Thank you. Not quite yet.
I'll close it up real quickly. A couple people made the comment, and I think this is a comment I never really thought about before. This is a customer issue at this point. This is not an employee parking issue. It wasn't meant to be an employee parking issue. It's great that it's not a safety concern, but the goal right now, especially with construction forthcoming, and all the other issues that we have in front of us, is what are we gonna do for these businesses to make sure that they stay viable, and they have the customers in those businesses? I think that's gotta be priority number one at this point. And the employee parking issue, I get it, it's a problem, but object number one, priority numero uno, we gotta get the customers into the businesses, and other things will be dealt with later. That's kind of my two cents.
Thank you. Anything else? Well, once again, I just wanna thank everybody for coming out, I really appreciate it. Excuse me. Just to give my two cents on this issue, I mean, I recognize that it's been a problem for quite a long time. I live close to downtown, I go to downtown very often, I've shopped pretty much all of your businesses, you see me around there. So, as an avid user down there, I, I see that problem firsthand. I see that there is limited parking at high-volume times for your patrons who are utilizing your businesses and your services. I trust the process, I trust our police chief, I trust the bid that have made a unanimous decision and recommendation as well. In the end, right now, we don't have a functional ordinance. And in case it's a surprise for you guys, I will not be here next summer when construction's going on as your mayor, but I certainly want to leave this place a lot better than I found it. So, I would strongly encourage that our council support this, it's just one more step in the right direction, and we can continue to work on it as a city team. So, thank you. So, with that, I will call for a vote, and just to be safe, if I could please have it be a roll-call vote. We do have a motion second on the floor, so Elizabeth, if you don't mind, do a roll-call for us.
Alderman Butchlick.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Berquist.
Aye.
Alderman Kaler.
Aye.
Alderman Dolnick.
Aye.
Alderman Aaron.
Nay.
Alderman Mado.
Aye.
Alderman Zingtime.
Aye.
Thank you. And that passes 7 to 1. Thank you again for the council's comments, thank you for the public for coming out. Oh, I'm sorry. Yep.
Yep, since it's non-unanimous, we'll have to vote at the next meeting to ratify it.
Okay.
It'll come back for one more vote.
Thanks, Tracy. No, that's all right. Thank you. And you guys are welcome to stay, we got a long, you know, agenda, a lot of other items we're talking about, otherwise, thank you again for coming out. And with that, I will recess the common council to Public Works.
Good evening. I would like to call the Board of Public Works. We have eight items on the agenda. We have items number one and two, approval of minutes from October 17, 2022, and November 7, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Any corrections or deletions? There are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item number three, award contract 22-10 Tree Surety. Good evening, Rick.
Hi. I'll introduce myself again.
Hey, if it's up, if it's up here, everybody, why don't we, John, if it's okay with you, why don't we just recess for like five minutes, give everybody a potty break, let these guys get out of here, and then we can get back to our business. All right. Sounds good. That was my mistake, I should've done it before.
All right, good evening. Okay, we will, we come back for our Board of Public Works meeting, and Rick, good evening.
My name's Rick Fox, project manager for Parks, Recreation, and Forestry. This evening, our department is requesting permission to award contract 22-10 Tree Surety Street Tree Planting Contract. We're requesting the contract be awarded to Dan Larson Landscaping of Cedarburg for a maximum contract cost of $78,413. This will be a spring 2023 planting project. We're bidding the project in the fall, several months ahead of the work, to, to obtain favorable pricing and ensure availability of materials. The project was bid as a base bid with two add alternates. The base bid in the amount of $63,613 from Larson includes the planting of 284 street trees with 12 weeks of watering and an 18-month warranty. The add alternate number one allows for hand-digging holes that are in the proximity of buried utilities, if necessary, for a not-to-exceed add price of $800. Add alternate two allows for up to 14 additional watering cycles, if they're needed, should dry summer conditions necessitate that, for a not-to-exceed price of $14,000. There's a 3% project contingency, resulting in a total project budget of $80,766. Funding sources for this contract include the Tree Surety Fund for trees planted in new residential developments, also 2023 capital funding for Free Street Tree Program and the Emerald Ash Bore Response. Also, there are 2022 carryover funds for the Free Street Tree Program and EAB, and finally, a 2022 urban forestry grant. The trees, in addition to Tree Surety for residential developments, we have a number of Free Street Tree requests totaling 97, so it's an indicator of how successful this part of the program is. We're also planting several trees at several road construction project areas, including Laurel Drive North, Mayor Street, Water Street, and along Villa Park Drive. That's all I have.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay. Any questions for Rick? Alderman Allen.
Yeah, what was the, what did you, what did this get estimated at? Were we above or below the estimate?
Our bids came in several thousand dollars below the pre-bid estimate of $91,700, and we're gonna be, let's see, $80,766 if we were to spend all of the alternate pricing for additional watering. I would anticipate that we won't.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? No other questions, we have a motion on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Thank you, Rick. Item number four, snowmobiling on the Eisenbaum Trail. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, everyone. This evening, our department is requesting a temporary variance, allowing snowmobiles on the Eisenbaum Trail. The requested area is from approximately Jackson Street to Commerce Street. The proposed trail would allow snowmobiles on city park property and the city right-ofway as it crosses over Commerce Street, and that's why we brought it again before the Board of Public Works this evening, because it's gonna be the public right-ofway section. The Kewaskom Snow Chiefs currently operate a snowmobile trail on the Eisenbaum Trail north of the city of West Bend, basically from the old lighthouse lanes to the north. The snow chiefs have approached us and Alderman for District Number Seven Justice Model to discuss and review the possibility of bringing the snowmobiles into West Bend and doing a small turnaround just to the east of Commerce Street. So, we would bring those snowmobiles in on a gravel section of trail into the city. We would have a small parking area at 1920 Northwest Avenue, which is city park property. The Kewaskom Club, the snowmobile club would maintain that parking lot, conduct the plowing and needed maintenance for that. The snowmobile club would take care of all the signage, grooming of the trail, et cetera, throughout the city of West Bend. This proposal has been reviewed by the Department of Natural Resources, Washington County Parks and Planning Department, the West Bend Police Department, the West Bend Fire Department. All these, all these organizations agreed with the proposed trail extension. Prior to our December Park and Rec Commission meeting, we did send informational letters to all the residents along that section of trail, because we have a new activity, something they've never seen before, could be a little bit of noise, or just, hey, we have snowmobiles on the trail behind my house, what's going on? And we want to make sure we communicate to them and hear back from them, and also, that way, maybe redo some phone calls at the police department that, hey, we have snowmobiles on the Eisenbaum Trail. In those letters, I'd actually asked the residents to contact me directly, phone call, email, or attend the commission meeting. We did not receive any responses from, any responses from any of those residents. There is a business owner up there, Commerce Street, pretty much dead ends right by Meese Products. We did talk to the Meese, the folks from Meese Products about this proposal, gave them some more detailed maps of their property. The trail is not crossing a private property, it's along the Eisenbaum Trail corridor, again, the Commerce Street right-ofway where it crosses over there, and again, in a park property up there off of Commerce Street. The Park and Rec Commission at their December meeting unanimously supported this variance for one year. They wanted to discuss this, just allow it for one year, and revisit this topic in October of next year, to see if we had any issues or anything like that. So, that's what we have before you for this evening. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions for Mike?
Oh, yeah, that's right, this is, we're still Board of Public Works, I may have basically a few things. Yeah, I did just want to, well, first of all, I've got pictures of Bill out there with the groomer that I'll get to for a flyer or whatever. And also, I just think there's gonna be a, you know, potentially a good thing for Barton, bringing some more business into the area. I mean, we don't get a whole lot of snow in Wisconsin, this part of Wisconsin, anymore, but, I mean, obviously, we have some coming up, so maybe it'll boost Barton for the next week, I don't know. But I think it's also great to be able to give snowmobilers a little bit extra, extra stretch, so I certainly support it.
Any other questions or comments? There are none, we have motion on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Thank you, Mike. Item number five, we have approval of stormwater management practices, maintenance agreements, Chipdola and Panera. Good evening, Max.
Good evening, thank you. So, this item is to approve an agreement for stormwater management maintenance with a development on Paradise Drive for Chipotle and Panera. So, this development is creating two lots, and each lot will have its own, its own agreement. So, that's why we have two agreements to approve tonight. Basically, this agreement I'll put in place every time we grant a stormwater management permit to a development, in order to make sure that the stormwater management practice is installed on the property, first of all, are being installed properly and are being maintained in the future, so they can continue to function as intended. So, this is a typical agreement that we have for those permits, and we recommend approval of both these agreements for this development.
Second.
Any questions for Max? Alderman Allen.
Max, it seems like when, when, when this came before the council and the planning commission, that it was talked about as Chipotle and Panera sort of one big development, the site plan was all one piece. Why would there be two, two, I mean, are they cutting the lot in half and, you know, short-plotting it, or whatever it would take? I guess that's the only reason I'm a little confused here.
My understanding is that there was one developer that owned the entire land. My understanding is that there was one developer that owned the entire land, and as he's doing the development, there were two businesses that were interested in being on that land. So the land is being split to create two lots, and one lot will be Chipotle, the other lot will be Panera, and that's why they have separate, separate agreement because there will be two different property owners in the end. It started with one property owner, and then it's going to become two property owners.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? There are none. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number six, permission to advertise C twenty-three dash zero-one Laurel Drive South. Max?
Thank you. So this is the first of three permission to advertise that we're coming to you tonight to present. So this one is for the construction of Laurel Drive South from Sylvan Way to Laurel Drive North. So Laurel Drive is like a horseshoe-shaped street that connects at both ends to Sylvan Way, and we did the north half this year, and we're going to do the second half from where we left off to the next connection on Sylvan Way next year. So we'll replace sanitary sewer, water main, storm sewer, and we construct the street with curb and gutter and spot repairs of sidewalk. The preliminary estimate is about one million, one hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, and the previously budgeted water utility, sewer utility, and American Rescue Plan Act, the ARPA funds, will be used to cover the cost of this project. Assuming favorable action by the board and council, we anticipate the schedule in your memo with the construction extended from May to August.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Allen and Alderman Kayler. Okay, any questions for Max? Yes, Alderman Allen.
I had a question about this and the next two. This one says ninety percent preliminary cost estimate. The next two say sixty percent. Can you explain why that is briefly?
So when we design reconstruction, our consultant who's putting the plan together is giving us sixty percent plans to review. We review those plans, they make changes, then they resubmit with the changes at ninety percent. So between sixty and ninety, we have made some changes, we have adjusted some things, and the ninety percent are closer to the final plans that are going to be built or bid out. And so, so the first contract, the design was more advanced. Right now, the other two, we have sent our review comments for the sixty percent, they're working on the ninety percent plans, which we will review very soon, and then generate the final plans at that point. So it's just a matter of the schedule of the design that brought this, this cost estimates.
All right. Any other questions? All right. There's a motion on the floor, no other. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number seven, permission to advertise C twenty-three dash zero-two Pennsylvania Avenue, Locust Drive to Kilborn Avenue.
Thank you again. So this item is for the reconstruction of Pennsylvania Avenue, and we would do, we would reconstruct sanitary sewer, replacing water main and installation of storm sewer, again, with road reconstruction curb to curb and spot repairs of sidewalk along the project. So the sixty percent preliminary cost estimate for this project is about one million, one hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, and previously budgeted water utility, sewer utility, and pavement maintenance program fund will be used to cover the cost of this project, assuming favorable action by the board and council. We anticipate the schedule that is described in your memo with the construction period between May and September 2023.
Okay.
Second.
Alderman Kayler and Alderman Model. Any questions for Max? There are no questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number eight, permission to advertise twenty-three dash zero-three Maintenance Street Reconstruction, Walnut Street to Washington Street.
Thank you. So this item is for the reconstruction of Main Street between Walnut and Washington, so the downtown area that we've been talking about, and we would be replacing water main through the project area and upsizing all storm sewer. The sanitary sewer was inspected and is in proper condition, so we don't need to work on that except adjusting the manholes when we change the street grades. Of course, we'll be repaving the streets, and there were some items that were added, like the new street lighting through the, through the project. The sixty percent cost estimate for this project is a little over three million dollars, and the funding source, sources will be water utility, sewer utility, pavement maintenance program, and TID funds that will be used to cover the cost of this project. Assuming favorable action by the board and council, we anticipate the schedule in your memo with the construction extending from March to October 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alderman Nellen and Alderman Model. Okay. Any questions for Max? There are no questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Max.
Thank you very much.
Be no further business before the Board of Public Works, I adjourn.
Okay. I'd like to call to order the Finance Committee for December nineteenth. Looking for approval of the minutes for the Finance Committee regular meeting, December fifth, 2022, six twenty-five P.M.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. The second item on our agenda is a resolution to accept donations to the Parks Recreation and Forestry Department. Mike Yatsch.
Thank you. This evening, we have three donations to present. The first donation of one thousand dollars was donated by the West Bend Sunrise Rotary for the purchase of a seventy-five-inch TV that included the installation and setup for use in the new Regner Park Beach House community room. The second donation is by the West Bend, West Bend Friends of Park and Recreation for twenty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents to complete the installation of that donated TV by the Rotary. And the third donation is sixty-three dollars by various citizens from our archery range on Municipal Drive. We have a donation bottle that is out there. So again, thank you to these donors that help improve our quality of life and our projects here in West Bend.
Looking for a motion?
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And also, Mike, I meant to thank you earlier for all your hard work on that snowmobile thing. That was, you really, you really went out of your way for it.
Nope. It's absolutely my pleasure to be, I think it's a good idea. I think it's a good opportunity.
Awesome. Awesome. Thanks. I know that's off-topic, but, okay. Third agenda, item on the agenda is a resolution approving transfer of funds from Parks Administration's salary account to capital account for Regner Park Beach House renovations.
Thank you. We are certainly happy to announce the one-point-eight-million-dollar Regner Park Beach House renovation is now complete. If you haven't seen the inside of the building, ever wanted to, or please give me a call. I'd be happy to show off the eighty-seven-year-old remodeled building. It's quite impressive, actually. The project was funded with over one-point-four million dollars in donations from area businesses, foundations, and private residents. It was also funded by using park impact fees and proceeds from the sale of the mutual mall building. After all the pledged donations are received and expenses are paid, we still have remaining balance to be covered. Staff vacancies this year have provided available fund balance in a salary account. This evening, we are requesting that twenty-four thousand, two hundred dollars be transferred from that available salary account to the Beach House project to close that out. Thank you.
Second.
I've got a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Just quick question. Is this common? This is for the administrator, or I don't see, Kerry, so, yeah, the administrator. Is this fairly common to move between operational accounts and capital accounts?
Common's relative. It's, it's not something that we do often. It's an identified need within parks, and parks had a bunch of vacancies this year in staffing that caused the money to be available. Quite frankly, it was a path to get this done and closed out. We worked really, really hard to, to secure some donations in the community, as Mike just shared, stepped up in a huge way. This is the closeout of that. We, we feel really fortunate to come here, and, and fair question, Alderman Allen, that is not something that if Kerry were here, she would say that we'd take lightly as a decision or recommendation to you, but this is an important enough one that we feel strongly with it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We stayed within Park's budget, using that, so. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, and happy holidays to you and your families.
Likewise. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. Fourth, yeah, fourth item on the agenda is a fire department resolution accepting a donation from Dr. and Mrs. Timothy Sullivan. Chief Kudak, take it away.
Good evening. Yes, we have a donation from Dr. and Mrs. Sullivan for our smoke detector program. They had smoke detectors installed and a CO detector and the home site visit, and they were appreciative, and they donated back to that account.
Awesome.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, resolution for acceptance of Wisconsin DHS dash EMS Flex Grant.
Yeah, I get to announce we got a grant, but not the one we really, really wanted, but.
A pretty good one, though.
Yeah, no, exactly. It's, it's a nice grant. It's part of the funding from the Department of Health and Services. It's forty-three thousand dollars and some change used to buy supplies that we did not have budgeted. So this resolution puts that into the expense accounts and then transfers it to an expense account that we need to do it.
Awesome.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item number six, fire department resolution accepting a donation from Kettle Marine Insurance Professionals.
So not only is Captain Hazen good at installing smoke detectors and getting donations for that, he also does a little guest speaking, and he talked to the Kettle Marine Insurance Professionals, and they were happy to oblige him with a check for his smoke detector program. So that one hundred dollars will go into that account and then also transferred into the revenue account that we buy the smoke detectors out of.
Awesome.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item number seven, the fire department resolution for appropriating FAPS ARPA funds attachment added.
Lot of alphabets there, right?
Yeah. Yeah, it's alphabet.
Basically, this is just cleaning up. We received these funds earlier in the year. We put them into our FAPS account. Finance would like it to be in a ARPA fund account so that they can track it better for recording purposes and their audit that they get. So this just basically takes it out of that account, puts it into the account that Finance wants it to, and then appropriates it to that expense account as well.
Finance is faulty.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And with no other, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Merry Christmas, Eric.
You too. With no other business before the Finance Committee, I'd like to adjourn by the call of the chair.
All right. We are back to common council. It's eight-twenty P.M., and we're only on item number two. All right. We have an appreciation presentation for the ATV UTV ride. Do we have anybody here to do that? They left? All right. Well, we appreciate you two. Maybe they can come back to it for us. All right. So then I'll move on to the, I'll move on to the consenting agenda, consenting items two through thirteen.
Second.
Thank you, Dolnick and Allen. Any questions on this? Hearing none. All's in favor, so I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to agenda items for consideration, number fourteen, appointment of Alderman Singsheim to the licensing board.
Motion to approve, or approve. Motion to approve.
Thank you, Allen and Kayler. Any questions on that? You want to serve? Sure. Thanks.
He can just vote against it.
You have no choice. All's in favor, somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then next up, we have four different bid board appointments. These are mixed, some are returning and some are new. So the first one is mayoral appointment of Larry Porter to the bid board. If we can have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Allen and Butchlick. All's in favor, somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number sixteen, mayoral appointment of Paul Zierling to the bid board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Model and Allen. All's in favor, somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Mayoral appointment of Wesley Feast to the bid board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Dolnick and Model. All's in favor, somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And mayoral appointment of Elizabeth Rose to the bid board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Berquist and Model. All's in favor, somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And thank you to all four of those for either returning or stepping up to serve our great city. Number nineteen, discussion and approval of a service agreement with E-Plan Exam to receive full delegation from the state of Wisconsin for commercial plan review and inspections. Mark?
Good evening. The city has, in the past, received a partial delegation of authority to review commercial plans. We're limited by the type of square footage and the type of plans that we could do. What we're proposing, if you would approve this service agreement, E-Plan would give us the capability of doing those through our consultant for these more involved or larger projects that currently can only be reviewed through the state's DSPS department. The idea of this is the, it's the same charge-out rate, the same cost to the developer as it is for them to go through DSPS. The advantage for them is that actually the typical review time for a typical commercial, large-scale commercial building plan for DSPS is between four and eight weeks, whereas we would have a contractual agreement here that would allow it to be done within fifteen days and probably lesser, less than that in most cases. It also allows the developers also have the advantage that if they make changes, the changes can be reviewed locally rather than through, through E-Plan without having to send back and join the queue for DSPS again. So it has very little impact on cost for us because we're charging the same amount. We're actually slightly revenue positive on this in that we would collect ten percent of the review fees for the, for the ones that E-Plan does, and they would obtain the rest of it. And if the charges are required to have a portion given to DSPS, that would come out of the portion that E-Plan Review does the review. It has some distinct economic development advantages for the city, gives us, be able to have a higher degree of service, but without increasing any fees. It also allows us to have slightly increased review revenues from water plans. Right now, a lot of the larger projects, because their building plans go to DSPS, their water plans also go there. In this case, we would do those in-house, not through E-Plan. At, at the same, again, the same, no cost for the, additional cost to the developer, but more revenue for the city. So it's, it's a positive on, a mild positive on the city's part for revenue. It gives our customers much better service, and it is a strong economic development tool. So we would ask that you give us the approval of the service agreement. If you have any technical questions, we do have Representative Zomatics from E-Plan and Todd Meeks from our building inspection office.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Berquist and Allen. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Sure, yeah. Do we, is there a lot of municipalities in the area that are, that are doing this as well? Does this make us more competitive or?
There are quite a few, and I'll let Mr. Maddox.
Is there a reason the whole state isn't doing it, I guess, is, this kind of makes sense?
Good afternoon, or good evening. My name is David M. Maddox. I'm the owner of E-Plan Exam. You asked a very interesting question. If I were to ask you to name an R brand of Kleenex, could you do it? For years, it's been state plan review. That's it, state review. That's how contractors, architects, engineers know it as. That's how contractors, architects, engineers know it is. When we started our company three years ago, out of 1,800 communities in the state, only eight of them had the ability to do unlimited-sized projects in-house for all five trades: building, HVAC, plumbing, fire alarm, fire sprinkler. Electrical is not required in the state for some reason. We're the only state in the Union that has that not required. You would think we would, but we won't. As of today, there are only 30. And to relay the economic impact of this, around Thanksgiving, we were told by DSPS that they were now booking appointments out past February 1st. Around Thanksgiving, we actually had in our community reach out to us. They became the 30th, the city of Marshfield. We signed a contract with them on the 5th of December. The 6th, we made application to DSPS. The 7th, they granted it to us. And on the 8th, 100,000-square-foot mall and a 50,000-square-foot hobby lobby literally scratched out the name on the check instead of sending it to DSPS, they sent it to us. The community netted revenue that they never saw before, and their inspection team got to have input on plans that they wouldn't have seen until after DSPS and the state would have been able to do it. So this program gives you a local hand in any project that's coming into your community because as they come into us, your team will also see them. And not many people even know that this is an option. So in terms of how many people around you, you'll have, if you go down this path, more power than the city of Green Bay, Kenosha, Racine, Brookfield, I can keep naming them all day long.
Well, obviously, yeah.
Yeah. The Village of Lake Delton could have a skyscraper put into it. You go down to Racine, you can't build anything bigger than a Starbucks without having to go to the state.
So it's just a matter of them, of other municipalities learning about you?
Yeah. Appleton, Waukesha, you can do it in-house. You go out to DePere, it's all got to go to the state. It really just is dependent on that community, knowing that this is an option. And here, Todd, years ago, helped get West Bend delegated for plumbing. That's one of the five. There are only maybe, what, 40 communities in the state that have plumbing delegation even? So.
So the process for us to do this without you is, is long and hard.
You wouldn't have been able to do it as easily because in order for this to happen, you have to have an architect or engineer oversee plan review operations. That's where I come into play. So basically, I'd be part of your organizational structure, reporting to Todd and basically managing the plan review operations, but you would have full visibility into our operations. And at any point in time, the applicant has a path of choice. They could go to the state, they could come here, and if they come here, you as a community have a path of choice. You could say, nope, go to the state, or we could do it. And at any point in time, you could say, we're going to give this all back to the state and go back to the way things were.
Yeah, and talking to the city administrator, couldn't find, we couldn't find really much downside to it, so.
I tried to create a business, a rarity, as a win-win-win.
It's easy to sell.
Yeah, it's easy to sell, and it's easy to sell to the state, too, because I literally pay for them to do the privilege of their work.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Appreciate the help, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Randy first, and then we'll go to.
Mark, does this do anything as far as personnel, time needed? I mean, is this going to take more people, more hours, or are we suited to do this without any additional staff?
No, we can, we can implement this without additional staff. Pardon me. We have just two individuals within the office. They have to review the state-approved plans anyway to know what they're inspecting. This is no different than that. Only we get it all digital, and we get it all from the same person every time. So it gets to be a very consistent review process. We can also, because we're, we develop a relationship, we also have the ability then to, they know what our concerns are when we're looking for these specific plans.
Yep, Mark.
Probably not a likely scenario, but we can, we can take any specific project and say, we really want this to go to the state, and, or are we locked into E-Plan for everything?
No, we have the ability to say this one is going to be directed to the state. If it would be something that we felt needed, that third-party type, and I will point out that by statute, the final decisions on these type of plans for interpretations on this type of thing actually resides with DSPS ultimately anyway. So there is, there is an oversight on all of this as well.
So as I understand the business model that was described, you're effectively acting as, like a privatization of a state function. In other words, you, you simply supplant the state, and then they have the, they, they oversee your.
Yeah. It's not a usurping of their authority. They ultimately still have ultimate authority. However, they willingly want this type of, I've worked on a legislative subcommittee that was pushing for more of this.
And then, and then the final question I have is, we, we already have the right to do, or the ability to do plumbing, correct?
We do plumbing, yes.
So, so as we come through the commercial plan, we can carve out that plumbing piece every time and say, Todd, you can work just a little harder.
We've, we've made that choice to do that right now because of, in order to keep this, the fee structure completely consistent with the states. If we went through, or through E-Plans, there would be an upcharge on, on plumbing plan reviews for the more complex ones.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, Don, do we get a motion yet?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did, okay. Then I'll call for a vote. All in favor, somebody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks, Mark. Thank you for sitting through two hours of our meeting just for this one moment. We appreciate it. Next up, we have approval of the 2023 budgets for TID number 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15. In the hope to give everybody the gift of time, I'm just going to ask for a motion. If anybody would like to make a motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you. It's been motioned second, and I'll ask, is there any questions of Mark, rather than letting him go through his normal summary?
Thank you.
No problem. Sorry, Mark.
Sorry.
I know you get really excited about this.
I thought after that ordinance discussion, I would be the high point.
Yeah, right? All right, well, if there's no questions for, for Mark, then all those in favor, somebody say aye? Any opposed? Thank you. See, that's how good of a job you do, Mark. I know, you had all ready for us. All right, and we're going to go on to reports. Number 23, report by Alderman Allen regarding the downtown bid board meeting.
Okay, this will sound a lot like deja vu all over again. Bid board once again did minutes and financial report to kick it off. We then talked about the fact that the city council had agreed to have additional hearings before taking action on the parking plan. And then we talked about the facade grant plan. The applications are now open. Encourage people to apply. We got a presentation on historic district that's been put into place in downtown. And we talked about the, the report of the progress of the Main Street Reconstruction Marketing Committee. So we had our first kickoff meeting at Epic Creative. They hosted us for a brainstorming session and to identify some issues. And that's where we are. And we also published the list of when the bid board meets. It's the first Tuesday of every month.
Any questions for Alderman Allen? Then on to a report by Alderman Dolnick and Model regarding the Plan Commission meeting.
Oh, we taking that? I think Dolnick wasn't there. We, we met on December 6th. We had a few, under the heading of development proposals. First of all was the, a young lady wanted to move a salon into her, in her house, start a salon in her house that included a sign outside. There was a number of people that showed up from the neighborhood. It was, probably, if it was a 20-minute meeting, 15 minutes was spent on this. It's ridiculous. But it was, it was, it was a spirited discussion, and it was, it was kind of neat seeing the, the neighborhood kind of come out in their, in their own, in their own interest. And I think they met the, the owner of the house, the husband of the woman that was going to be doing the hair, and it made them feel better because they really were just being honest, coming out asking for permission to do this in a situation where frankly, a lot of people just do it anyways, but.
I'm proud of you for allowing the competition to come into the city.
Yeah. Exactly. Okay, and then there was a, that was a conditional use permit, another conditional use permit and site plan for an additional, in addition to the screened outdoor storage area in M3 Plan Business Park District at 2805 East Progress Drive. Also, and then a CSM for, to redefine the lands for future development at the 1600 block of South Main Street by Corte, that's down in that Chapco area again. The last one was a CSM, to redefine the lands for future development located at the West Side of South Main. I'm trying to remember this one. I can't wait to get it in my head though. You know which one that was?
The Podiatrist Lot?
Oh, right, right, right. Okay, yeah, last CSM. So that was about it.
Great. Any questions for Alderman Model? All right, next up is a report by Alderman Berquist regarding the Airport Commission.
Hey, we had a meeting, we talked, and we adjourned. Just kidding. Are you kidding? I prepared this. You're not, you're not, so, cool, thank you, sir. The last meeting of the Airport Commission was held on December 8th. This meeting was a discussion-only meeting as there was no official action to be taken. After approval and a minutes of the last meeting held on October 25th, we began our work of discussing existing municipal code as it pertains to the airport. Airport manager Mike Shaw explained that he had been doing some research on reviewing our municipal code and updating it to, to address current recommendations from the FAA and the Wisconsin BOA, that's the Bureau of Aeronautics. Items discussed included how to, how the code addresses the use of private or corporate hangars at the airport, commercial operators at the airport, gate access policy, and penalties for use violations. We then discussed issues with airport usage to include runway obstructions, vehicle access to include restrictions on vehicle speeds, and pedestrian access. We also talked about how code needs to be, needs to address abandoned or disabled aircraft and the requirements concerning airworthiness of aircraft at our airport. The commission was asked to digest this information provided and be prepared to provide input into updating the current municipal code with action coming sometime in the near future.
Done. Questions? Good job. All right, last but not least, a report by Alderman Kayler regarding the Park and Rec Commission.
The Park and Rec Commission met on December 8th. We approved the snowmobiling on the Isavon, which came before council tonight. That was unanimous. There'll be a turnaround near Commerce and Monroe and obviously parking on what is currently the City Wood Lot. We also approved new rental fees. We approved our 2023 meeting dates. We accepted the three donations, which Mike already covered in finance. And we also did a transfer from direct fund balance to the mud run for a new inflatable slide to enhance the mud run for next year for $8,290. We adjourned and went and enjoyed some Christmas cheer. End of story.
Great.
That's a serious slide.
Any questions for Alderman Kayler? Then, as we're at the end of our meeting, I'll open up for any announcements to my right. Yeah, I'll go with Mark and Randy. Oh, whichever.
Yeah, I just wanted to take note of the fact that a prominent West Bend citizen, also a, an alumni of this council and even the presidency of the council. Your predecessor, John Hope Cross Nelson, died in hospice last week, so she will be missed.
Thank you. I know Alderman Allen and I are going to be working on a proclamation that we'll be bringing back to the city council for that. Alderman Kayler?
On a more cheerful note, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody. We probably won't see you until after that. All my fellow council members, city employees, all the staff and citizens of this fine city, Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Ditto, Kayler.
Then on that note, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Years for all of us here at the city of West Bend, and have no further business for the Common Council. I'll adjourn by the call of the Chair. Have a great night.